Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. I just apologize for our lateness coming out of executive session but ready to go. So let's rise to the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, we gotta do a resolution for our clerk pro temp. Be resolved, the Board of Education appoints Sarah Dudley Lemick as clerk pro temp to reside in the absence of Lisa and Sonia. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Ed. Discussion?
I think she'll do an excellent job.
I'm already going behind.
Slow down. All those in favor? Close, who will carry?
Just going back, who called, who?
Sue and Ed. Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. We'll close public comment.
Yes, so we have two special presentations. The first, I spoke with Lou Rodriguez from the Plon group a couple of weeks ago. Asked Lou to prepare a presentation for the board, just to give us an update on where we are in the seventeen million dollar project and what's left. So Lou, thank you very much for coming tonight. He's a big Yankee fan.
Give my time.
They had a bad weekend though. Lou, thank you very much.
Trying to make this quick and painless. Yeah, so we're gonna talk about seventeen point five million dollar project that was passed. I'm just gonna go over each one of the prime contracts, where we are with each one of the contracts as far as their performance and what's gonna be completed. I'm gonna review the project budget as a whole, big picture, and we have the alternates that currently have been selected and we've moved some things into the approved line because we had more alternates that we afforded. And then we'll pass some photos and then open it up for any questions you guys might have. So Phase 1A is not part of this overview. Phase 1A was completed and closed out successfully under budget. So what I'm really focusing on is Phase 1B. Phase 1B was broken out into three components. Phase 1B point one, point two, and point three. Point one was the elementary school. We broke it out into four contracts, Key Construction Services. Their current contract right now is holding at one point three six five eight three two. All of the numbers that I'm showing right now are inclusive of the latest approved changes, meaning the alternates, mainly the big ones were the roofs. Currently, they're working on the roofs. That's the only scope of work they're working on that's open. Recently awarded is a change order scheduled to be completed by the week of eight thirteen. Weather permitting. Clean air quality services, three hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred. All work has been completed. They're done. Fifth Field pipers, hundred fifty-four thousand, three thirty-six. Again, all work's been completed. Right now, it's just closed-out paperwork that we're waiting and retainments to still be paid. Hudson Valley Electric Maintenance, five hundred twenty-six thousand, two sixty-seven. All work has been completed. Again, this is at the elementary school. And I say closed-out being completed for all. So right now, there's closed-out documentation that's old for all of them. The bottom three are completed worth of work. We're just closing them out. And then Key Construction Services is currently working on the roof. So that's the big, big scope of work for them. Once they're completed, we can close them out. 1B point two, this is the high school and the bus garage. The GC here is doubtful construction. Their contract value currently, including the roofing work that was recently awarded, one point five five four two hundred. All the work, including the alternates and the roofing, is scheduled to be completed by nine one. HVAC CB strain, five hundred six four fifty. All work to be completed by nine one. The only work that they're working on right now is work associated with kitchen equipment. Kitchen equipment is showing up on eight thirteen, okay? So they're, everyone's sort of holding back right now on the kitchen. Home contract Duchess Mechanical, hundred eighty-four nine seven one. Again, work to be completed by nine one. They're waiting for kitchen as well. Hudson Valley Electric, one point five five two two four nine. All work is to be completed by nine one. They're waiting for work associated with kitchen upgrades as well. And closed-out needs to be completed for all. So all the scopes of work for the high school bus garage are to be completed by nine one. That's good. One point, B point three is the middle school. The GC there is Optimus. One point three zero seven two four eight is their current contract, including the roofing work. All work, we're looking to have it all completed by nine one. They are the hardest one we've been dealing with, to be honest, across all the GCs. Their scope of work that are open right now are the kitchen upgrades, the front entry lobby, the toilet room renovations, and the roofing work. But we believe we will be done by nine one with the GC work. DJ Heating and Cooling, one million fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ten thousand, or a hundred and ten dollars. All work has been completed. There is a change order that's not listed here. There was some extra ventilation that the district required in the boiler room. So they're working on some work there. Duchess Mechanical, two hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred. All work completed by nine one. Right now, they have work in the kitchen, home careers, the gas shut-off that we were waiting for, and the toilet room renovations. Those are the three areas they have to work. They will be completed by nine one. Castleman Electric, four twenty-five seventy-five. Again, kitchen upgrades, home careers. The home careers is strictly the electrical ship, associated with that gas shut-off. There's nothing else there. And the toilet room renovations. So again, middle school work, we're looking for all the work to be completed by nine one. Closed-out being completed for all as far as closed-out docs. Look at the budget. Phase 1A, this is what we actually closed out at. When you look at five million sixty-one thousand, that's what actually goes to SED as your final caution report for the, for those contractors. This is actually about, oh, that's clever. That's actually about a hundred thousand dollars less than what we awarded the contracts. We were able to, we got credits back from both the GCs on that contract. So we were under budget on Phase 1A. Phase 1B, right now, with the contracts, as I just tallied them, we're at nine point four five million. Within the nine point four five million, I'm also holding two hundred and eight thousand dollars for day automation, which really should be part of your smart bond money. But I'm holding it in this overall picture. So just remember that when I get to the bottom. But there isn't part of nine point four, I'm holding two hundred and eight thousand for day automation. Contracts to be awarded, there was still a discussion. I don't know where the district was with it for phone system contracts to be awarded. I was holding the actual price of ninety-four seven seventeen. If it was awarded, great, that's the number. If it wasn't, just need to make sure that that's the number for the phone systems to be awarded. So I'm holding, still holding that number. Incidental costs, two point five three three nine five two. That number is inclusive of the additional cost for our additional time. So I'd made sure that I updated the incidental costs to include our additional costs. So right now, we're at two five three three. The only unknown there is how you guys are financing the project. So there's a lot of money in there for financing. I just don't know how you're doing it, but I have a placeholder in there for financing. So add all that together, the total running project costs were seventeen one four one. The approved bond was at seventeen point five million. So right now, we're running under budget by three hundred fifty-eight thousand, which is a great thing. Within the contracts themselves that are up as part of the nine point four million, we still have unused a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in allowance. So you take the one twenty-five with the three fifty-eight plus the two oh eight, that gives you a really good idea of where we are as far as where we are on the budget, on the project. So I think we're doing really well coming to the close on this project, and I think everyone should be really happy about that. And just so we understand, on the nine point four million, we recently awarded one point five on alternates. So what we did, we got to a point where we were staying within the budget. We held it, held it, held it. Awarded close to a million dollars in roofing, did the computer labs, did the locker rooms. We did a bunch of special things for an additional one point five that we added that were supposed to be part of the scope, kept it within the budget, and we're still within, we're still under budget. So out of everything, I think this is probably the most important sheet to be looking at and making sure that these numbers are on point. I know these are all on point. Incidental costs, there's always a difference of opinion on those, but I know we are under budget on this project. As far as the alternates that were awarded, again, what I did, I made sure we moved everything to the selected item. So these are the only areas that were not awarded, that were potentially promised during the original bond. So I left these as not selected, so everyone understands that these are items that we still may want to consider in your future bond, but this is other work that we were considering at one time. But you'll see here, we got five hundred plus two hundred plus another two hundred. We have close, we have nine hundred, nine hundred grand just in roofing that we recently just awarded, which is pretty good. Photos, this is just some pictures. This is the current status of the game bathrooms at the, at the middle school. So you can see right now, we're right at the end. The finishes are going up. We're just looking to get the fixtures in. Bathroom's been schooled again. Again, we're looking for fixtures to go in. Kitchen work at the middle school. Again, the main thing we're waiting for right now at the middle school as well as the high school, August thirteenth is the date that we're looking for kitchen equipment, to be honest with you. You'll see in the back, you knew sound and lighting booth at the high school, so that was completed. Kitchen renovation at the high school, you can see it's, again, it's ongoing. There's a lot of work going on here, kitchen renovation. And there's, of course, the blistering, all of the re-roofing work that's happening, or the skim coat that we're doing. It's just some pictures, this is at the high school.
So just explain, just for the public, just a quick explanation of, you know, of the roof, of what the material is and how they redo it, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so what happens is, the current roof system is a foam, it's a foam roof. And over the years, what foam will do, it'll get wet, and it'll start to, you know, take in water. So what we did was, we did an infrared stand of all the roofs. The infrared scan shows wet areas. Those wet areas are taken out, brought down to the deck, new foam is in-filled. And then there's spots that are high spots throughout as well. Those high spots are scarified and made flat so that you can get proper pitch. So over the years, a foam roof will start to move and start to bubble until you'll see, whether it's patches or scarifying, that's what's happening across the roofs. And then what happens at the end, there's a final coating that goes on that gives you an additional fifteen years of warranty. So that's gonna be, the final application is a fifteen-year application. And these roofs were originally put on almost twenty years ago. So you're gonna get another fifteen years on it for the nine hundred thousand that was spent across all preschools. That's a, that's a pretty good deal. And you'll see, this is the spray process. This is at the elementary school. So you can see, this is a patch. This is like where they actually go down to a deck area and then they have to put the foam back on. And every area has a requirement for the insulation of a certain thickness of foam. And then there's areas that were scarified.
How about, how thick is a foam roof, just for people?
Depending on pitch, it can go anywhere from six inches to three inches, and you gotta keep the R value. But you have an existing foam roof already. So we weren't really adding insulation, because what happens is, SED is requiring now that if you add insulation on top of your existing, you have to show that your structural, your building can hold that load. So really, what they try to do is, if you're renovating existing, keep them, we're not adding extra insulation so it doesn't hold extra snow, because that may affect your structure. So I think it's a good approach that you guys did here. You get another fifteen years out at the manufacturer, Henderson and Johnson, they're not going out of business anytime soon. They've been in the business a long time, so. And this, again, it's across all the roofs. And for maintenance now, when we're done, all three buildings will be at the same warranty level. Whoever takes over facilities after Pete's gone is not gonna have to sit there and wonder which building came first, second, third, what area of the roof was first, second, third. The only area that we're not touching is the cow wall system here at the high school. So that's the update, guys. Any Q and A?
Does the coating stay this white color? Does it stay white?
It's, yeah, it's like a gray, yeah.
Just curious.
Move for everybody's information, cow wall system would be the library roof, right?
The cow wall is at the library, it's a translucent panel system. That, again, was put on in the last project. The product has gotten better over the years, but, you know, it's something you guys might wanna be looking at. But yes, that's the only area on this roof that hasn't touched.
Lou, just real quick, under your incidental costs, you include, I know you included your ad on, did you include the architectural additional fees in that number?
I had a reserve in there of fifty thousand that I was holding. I don't know what they actually charge you, so I was holding a place. Okay, so I just have a place.
So that's not, that only fifty is included in that? You mentioned middle school, the GC being, I don't know if you use the word problem, but do you foresee any additional concerns there with them completing and/or holding up the other trades to finish their work?
My concern with the GC there is making sure that they're paying their subs. That's probably the most important thing.
Staying on top of that?
Yeah, we're staying on top of that. That's, I think they're gonna complete the work. My problem is, is after the work is completed, will everyone else get paid? And that's where we have to be very, we gotta be very particular about that.
And my last question, I know we're still waiting for the approval from SED on that piece of Smart School money that we're gonna apply to this project, which is, for the most part, the security piece of it all.
Correct.
What you're feeling as far as the integration of the infrastructure prior now that we had built in to allow day automation to complete everything at the end, do you feel that that's all been?
It's a pretty good question. I have, we've been tracking, tracking their changes, and the one, the one item that I was concerned about was making sure that we had, we had something built in for day. So with day automation right now, their original contract was one hundred eighty-six thousand. So the big area of change that I was worried about were the frames, the door frames, the rated door frames that you can't core into afterwards. So at the elementary school, we did, we spent sixty-seven hundred dollars on future security mods to the door frames. At the middle school, we did three new door frames, again, to make sure we were ahead of them. And then here at the high school, we did five new door frames. So did we hit everything? I don't know, but what we tried to do was forecast where they were gonna be. We hit all three schools at major points that we thought would, you know, be in a way of, or should I say, take a rated door and make it not rated, a new door that we're doing work with. So we have spent some money, and that's why their contract is at two oh eight, not the one eighty-six.
But I think their contract is a lot more overall for the entire?
For the whole thing, yeah. It's a six hundred thousand. Yeah.
Lou at the middle school, front entrance lobby, has there been any issues with the ADA compliance with the ramp and/or configuring that coming through that lobby area?
The lift. That's been the biggest back and forth.
But will be a ramp or something?
Yes.
At some point?
The lift. Yeah, the lift and a ramp.
Has that been all worked around?
It's, it's been a big debate on that, because what was approved actually didn't fit. So it's, we've been just stuck in this back and forth, but we, we're gonna make it work. It's a regular conversation. We're gonna make it work.
And home careers, you said, we still have that gas valve?
It's a gas shut-off valve. The gas shut-off valve is a, is a long lead, and Bill from Duchess, we just gave him the go-ahead just a little while back to go with it. And then we have Castleman that has the wiring associated with it, but that'll be done before school term.
Does anyone else have any questions for Lou?
Do we get update next meeting, just to see where things are at?
Uh, yeah, 'cause our next meeting is two weeks, three weeks. We should have a better idea of where we are at that point, prior to this kind of long pandemic.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll just shine windows.
As for Tom's question, I'm just curious, so the physical space in the lift isn't appropriate?
There's different lifts that will fit in that space. We had recommended a lift that would fit. The architects didn't like the lift, so there's been just a back and forth on what the right lift and, you know, there's a lot of different manufacturers out there of lifts. So the discussion's really revolved around what's the best lift for you guys that'll fit in that spot.
Are any of them long lead issues?
Yes, they are. And well, I, we got to the point where we ordered the lift that was specified. It's just gonna, it's gonna protrude out like three inches. We're still gonna have room, so it's gonna be a little tight.
With the kitchen equipment being delivered on the thirteenth, you said it'll be ready by the beginning of September, September one. Is that, will the kitchen be able to get in there? Will the kitchen staff be able to get in there before September first, do you think? Or is, is that what you want?
I'm concerned that we need to leave real for the health department's command approval.
Yeah, so Kevin's been in top contact with health department just to make sure that they come in and do their go-through, but we'll make sure that, you know, your dry goods area, your walk-ins are all presentable. You know, really, at the end, when I say nine one, the week before, we're just hooking up final electric, final gas, you know, all the equipment, setting the equipment's pretty quick. It's just making sure everything's, everything's good, that the, you know, the hood's working the way it should, all the floor sinks are working the way they should, 'cause that's really what, you know, the board helps coming in, they're looking at the floor sinks, how clean is everything? They're looking at transitions, all the areas that collect grime, you know, so we wanna make sure that everything's looking clean. So, you know, it's always a dance we do with, on any significant kitchen project, it's always a dance we do right at the end, so.
Okay, Mark, I'll let you go this time.
Just had a quick question. Lou, when you talk about the GC on middle school, Optimus, are you pulling pages on what their prevailing wage and what they've been paying? Is that what you were talking about? That you're checking?
We're required to take in certified payroll. That's, that is part of our routine. But really, the main part of the routine is going to make sure that we're getting proper lien releases from each one of our subs. We know who all of their subs are that have been working on the project, so really, it's making sure that we get proper lien releases. If they, if they forge a lien release, then they're out of business. So it's, it's one of those things where you have, you know, we go through the process, and then us as a team, before we make final payment, we make sure we feel comfortable about that. Even to the extent, I guess, if we have to, we can call each sub with that particular prime. Right now, the only issue that prime has is with, with a previous subcontractor that we used last summer and a basement sub, and there's a dispute that they have internally that they're trying to bring us into, and we don't wanna be part of that dispute.
Is that what brought it to your attention originally?
It was brought to my attention last year, I guess.
Because of that issue?
Correct.
Thanks. Okay, board members, any other questions? Thanks, Lou.
Thank you very much. So we have a second presentation tonight. Well, we'll probably, in the future, not have too many presentations a day, but Karen Brooks, our Director of Data and Assessment, is here. I wanted Karen to just give the, we're not gonna be going over too many specific numbers tonight. Tonight is just to educate the board and the public as to, you know, what kind of reports come in, when do these numbers come in, and what do we do with them? So I guess I have a good presentation, and as soon as, whenever you're ready, Karen, we can get started.
Thank you for having me. I'm Karen Brooks. We're just gonna go over what I call the cycle of data. And the data cycle usually starts right after the testing ends and right when summer starts and the new school year, and we start getting our reports and our scores. First comes in our item data, and then comes in our performance data, and that usually comes in over the summer. So we're starting with our cycle of data in June and July, and basically, our item data is released for three through eight testing, our region's exams, and our APPR information is released. So what we're basically doing, when we get this information, is the first thing we look at is a strand analysis. And a strand analysis and ELA, I will be looking at instructional reading for literature, reading for informational text, language, seeing if there's any areas that stand out that we performed really well, or that we might need some improvement. Then in math, we would look at the domains. That falls under the strand analysis. So the domains are things like numbers based ten, fractions, operations and thinking, measurement and data. And we go through grade by grade, again, looking for strengths and weaknesses. Then the next thing we do is an individual response analysis by teacher and grade, and we're looking at the strand, we're looking at the, we're looking at the standard, and we're seeing how many kids got questions wrong in each of the standards. So when we're looking at this, we're looking to see if the kids, if there's any kind of patterns or areas that the kids are doing really well, or if the kids are in patterns that they need a little help with. And when we're looking at the individual response analysis, usually some questions that go through my head are, is it the test? Is it the way the question is presented on the test, which is usually something like, is, is it, might be a way that the kids have never seen the standard before? Is it something that maybe is an instructional strategy or a deficit in our curriculum that we might have? Or is it something that we need professional development in? So those are the four top questions I'm always asking myself when we're doing this. Then we look at, and we take this down a little further with the students, and then we start looking at the questions. And the release questions come out usually in July, in July. And we start looking at the release questions and seeing if there's any patterns and question types that the kids do really well, really poor, and by standards as well. Then we do the prediction of possible RTI AIS students, see if those match up with the numbers that we think we're gonna have. And then we do our APPR scores and calculated, which are actually, we do them over the summer, and they're actually doing the fall very soon. So August and September, again, we start looking. August is when the performance data usually comes in. This late, it's very, this year it's very late. Last year, it came out much earlier. It was promised to us on August first, and it It was promised to us on August 1st, and it came out the 29th. It's normally out around the 18th of August, and this year, they're telling us it's going to be very late. They're saying towards the end of August. So, gap analysis is one of the things I look at when we finally get these scores. And a gap analysis is basically, I look at where we're at, what our goals is, and where we would like to be in performance, and determine how we can get there. Our root cause analysis is basically a drill down. I use a lot of the resources from Harvard, and I use the five whys to drill down. What is the root cause? Where did it come from? Why did we get this? How did this happen? And when we use the root cause, we're really trying to drill down to see... And I'll give you an example many school districts have. Geometry. For the last few years, schools have not performed very well in geometry. This year, it looks good for us, but in the last, it hasn't been too good. You can actually take scores and look and see where did the actual problem begin with geometry? Did it begin in middle school? Did it begin in, is it high school, middle school, elementary school? Or did it go back as far as kindergarten? And some of the school districts I've worked with in the past go back to as far as kindergarten and second grade. Trend analysis. When I look at trend analysis, it's not only how the students are doing from year to year with their cohort, but it's also the same, looking at the curriculum and the standards from year to year. Are we seeing different kids having the same problems from year to year? And that tells us something else in the data. And then, finally, one of the most important things in my job is triangulation. And that's where I take these multiple measures, and I start looking at all this data, and I determine if what we have is valid or not. So, I will take the state scores. I'll look at them going up through the regions. I'll take the state scores and compare them to the benchmark exams that we have, our formative assessments that we offer at the end of classes, and also, we'll use like star exams and other exams that we use to triangulate to see if we're seeing the same areas of strength and weakness. And that's what we're constantly looking at. What are we good at, and what do we need to do better? Because we don't, we have to look at both, because what I've seen a lot of times is when we don't look at the strengths, we change them, and then we end up with more weaknesses. So, it's really important to look at what we do well and celebrate those successes. So, then, October, November roll around, and this is when all the subgroup data is released. This is your special ed data, it's your ethnicities, it's your economically disadvantaged, homeless, military families, all the subgroup data is released. And again, we look at that as analysis. We do a gap and a trend analysis, again, strengths, weaknesses, and we do it across time as well. We review results with each grade level and departments. We go in at this time period, it would be Sarah and I going in with the principals and talking to the different grade level teams to see how they're doing, and taking the data in a friendly enough format that they understand that's coded, and then have them talk to us and have them explain to us what the data means to them. And it's a really very rich conversation that goes back and forth. It's very eye-opening. And I tend to use, when I do data and I talk with these groups, I tend to use a format called cognitive coaching, which gets to the root cause of why we do things and why the way we tend to do things. Then, Bens Day. Bens Day is huge. A lot of work in school district comes from Bens Day. We're all living for October 3rd, Bens Day. And basically, we have seven SERES reports alone. SERES is, we're going to get into that, it's our Student Repository Information System. And those are the reports that the state requires us to file every school district every year. And our big SERES comes up every year in August. This year, it's August 22nd, next year, it's August 23rd in 2019, and it's due by noon. And the state does not joke around with that noon. Then, we begin with our schools, usually in October, because we have a good understanding where the kids are at, we have administered some benchmarks, we have their state scores, performance scores, and we start the AIS model. And then, we go in and we look at tier, what's happening in the classroom, tier two, tier three, and what interventions we can use in reading and math to help our students perform better. What's working, what's not working with that data? December and March, this is our mid-year. This is our review planning. We tend to analyze the January regions. We go through gap analysis, strand analysis, trend analysis. Then, we do one thing further. At this time period, we do a distractor analysis, which was also done in the summer with 3-8, but we do this again with the regions and 3-8. And it's where we actually look at the distractors. Those are the responses the kids have that they can pick. And if the students were looking at a cross, and if there's 100 kids, and 50 pick the correct answer, and 25 pick, and 25 pick two different answers, what made that other 50 or half of the students pick those other two answers? So, we call that a distractor analysis. And what we're doing is we're getting into the thinking or the metacognition of the student to help them perform better and understand the process better. So, it's really, it's a really big deterrent, really big for us in math, because it helps us understand where they're having the problems understanding. And the same with reading comprehension. It really helps us understand where they're at in the reading comprehension process. Then, preparation for the 2019 exams begins around January, February, where we go through. We start looking at test-taking strategies too, and helping the kids understand test-taking strategies when they're taking the test as well. Every test is designed, there's a favorite letter all the time. It's amazing when you look at that. Even the regions, if you understand the structure, you can help the kids pass it. Review and analyze district benchmarks. We look at them, we see if we need to tweak them, restructure them, and that's what we do at that time with the benchmarks. Then, April through June, we come into the end of the year again. Report card comes out. It's the report card, it's always from the year before. So, this is the 2017, 2018, and that's released. So, what I do is I help explain the results and what they mean. This year, report card is going to look a little different because of the Every Student Shall Succeed Act, they're actually redoing the report card, and it's going to have a different structure. So, I'm going to be going through and explaining to you why we got 1, 2, 3, and 4, and the way the schools are being ranked. It's not a district anymore that's getting ranked, it's individual schools that are getting ranked. So, we'll be going over that. Then, we also take the curriculum. Remember those gaps we talked about and the trends? We start preparing for summer writing and curriculum writing in the summer. Then, we review and analyze the benchmarks again for the end of the year. We look at growth. How much growth are the students making? And is it an amount of growth that we would expect students to make? And what do we need to tweak with our benchmarks? We compute our APPR scores, and then, we close out our school information repository system, as I mentioned before, our SERES, which is due the end of August. It's the 22nd this year, and we're already, the data folks are already planning for next year, because we know we have to have everything done by the 23rd for next year as well. It's usually like one day off, so, thank you.
Any questions for Karen?
When I took my governance class, there was a lot of attention paid to benchmark testing. And that's been something I've been asking about for several years. Are we, are we supposed to be having periodic reports of benchmark testing the board, or is that just internal?
It could come, it could come to the board. It depends on how you're doing benchmarks. If you do benchmarks as part of a grade, that's more going into the privacy of the kids' grades, if you're doing benchmarks to truly see where kids are at and what they've learned, you might want a report to see where they're at. Like, for example, middle school star. We could do a student growth report periodically, the three times that's given, and that would give you an idea. You're looking for growth of a student between 35% and 65%. Average in New York State's 42%. So, that might be something that you're looking for. One thing that's in education that we have to keep in mind is our students are what we call a volatile variable, which means they don't perform every day. That's why it's really important to look at multiple measures. Whenever you look at one benchmark in time, there's a whole mess of things that could be affecting that benchmark. So, we really want to look at things in groups of numbers and see if we're seeing the same things. It could be the same data, but in multiple ways, just to see if we're seeing the same thing. Because kids' lives today are so... There's just so many things going on in kids' lives today that we didn't, or at least I didn't have to deal with when I grew up. And I see this every day, not even before I've been to all the schools they've been, and even here. It's really hard to just do it one snapshot in time.
And that's a little bit where she was talking about the triangulation too, and looking at, because the state assessment that they take in April and May is just one day, it's good to be able to match up our, the math benchmarks that we started for the, we're doing the star for ELA at the middle school right now, to be able to put all of those together to try to get an idea, you know? Is one of them giving us more information, but do we see a general trend?
We presumably get reports as the correlation between the benchmarks and state testing.
Yes, right. And what's nice with things like star is it's norm-referenced. So, you're taking what your students are doing, and it's being compared to like students in the country. Which is a little different than our locally created benchmarks. We're comparing them to just specifically our New York State standards. So, the two actually are a nice complement to each other, because you're seeing locally and you're seeing nationally. And I do have to tell you, from working for the 20 years at OCS, our region, the four counties, we perform very similarly, and we perform very differently than the rest of the state. So, it's really interesting to see that kind of data.
I think part of, I'm going to speak to Sue, I think. Your concern, though, we've been relying on benchmark testing in the district since so many children opted out, or so many parents have opted out in the past. So, I wanted to know the correlation between state results and our benchmarks, and make sure they're very tight, so that we can be sure that we're not leaving students behind.
That's why the triangulation piece is so important. They can guess as much as they want what those kids would get, but, and do forecasting, that's what we would call it, but it's very hard to do, because students learn. The way they learn and the way they plateau, it's, you can do an estimate, and the best way to do is star or something of that sort. And when we do something with our own local benchmarks, it's a little harder to forecast. It's doable, but it's harder to do.
Hopefully, our local benchmarks will be a more accurate assessment than the state assessment.
Right, and I think that's why we're continually, you know, every year, you look at them and we... So, we're going into the third year at the elementary school and the second year at the middle school. So, we kind of need to get a few years under our belt to be able to really look back and see, you know, we can do some comparisons in the year, but to really get an idea of, you know, are we improving the test? Are we getting better results as we go through?
And the critical thinking essay that they do in the middle school is really good. You can really see in the way the students respond to things and their results, that it's getting that creative piece and that writing piece and that critical thinking piece, which a lot of kids don't, aren't having in middle school. So, some of the benchmarks and local assessments we add are excellent.
Well, put together timelines, snapshot of our timelines. Can you have, can you email that to each one of the board members?
Sure.
That way, we can do that directly.
Yeah. No, I forgot. We're locked out.
Yeah, we're all locked out.
Yeah, we can't figure, Carly and I were trying to figure out why that was.
All right, yeah, and I forgot.
And our plan was so, I think it was okay. So, probably quarterly, you know, Karen will do presentations throughout the year as we kind of hit each of these time periods to give you an update. So, it'll be throughout the year, it won't be something, you know, you see once or twice a year.
What Alan said, it was still very nicely put together. I almost want to see, as Paul put on the website, explains the importance of assessment and how it breaks down over the year with, you know, why it's not just the, like, it's not just the state test, it's constant assessment and why it's important.
Hopefully, we'll get more parents involved and letting them take the assessments, because the way Every Child Shall Succeed Act is, it looks like it's going to affect us in the long run with our scores and our report cards possibly if they don't. So, it's something to look at and consider. And I know quite a few of the districts have really pushed to get kids, more kids to take the assessments, but it's really hard. It's very close to a lot of people's hearts, and it's a really tough subject to try and convince people, once they've got their mind against something, to come around to it again. But it's a really very valuable tool for us, especially in the triangulation piece.
It's a trust issue, and I think we have to, we have to, we have to work with trust.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're all locked out.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll leave you.
I know we've probably said this multiple times, but in the future, if they can check, it's just going to be more ways to get on, because, I mean, I utilize a lot of the backup material for reference, and we don't have that in front of us right now. Okay, moving on. Acceptance of reports. Be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Our Board of Education meeting minutes, the attendance and enrollment report for June 2018, our internal claim order reports, May, June 2018, and our food service report end of the year. Can I have a motion, please? By Sue, second by Tom. Discussion?
Sarah, the only thing I just want to just ensure is that I know it's a monthly report, but that dropouts are, if there is a dropout in any specific month, that that column is being filled in?
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? So, Carrie. Under personnel, I'm going to do it a little different tonight. We'll take it at block, but we'll do each letter as a block. So, for leave replacements, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, superintendent approves the following leave replacement as follows. I won't read each one. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Ed. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? So, Carrie. Under coaching, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following coaching appointments for the 2018-19 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? By Sue, second by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? So, Carrie. Resignation, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent accepts the resignation from the following employees as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Sue. Discussion?
Wish the best for Kathleen in her new job. She's a great asset to our district.
Thank you.
And we will recognize at the end of all our personnel and the, of the hired that are in the attendance in the audience. Rescind retirement, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following request to rescind resignation for the purpose of retirement that was board-approved in July.
Sorry, did you vote on the resignation?
All those in favor? Oppose? I think we're good now. Rescind retirement. Be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following request to rescind resignation for the purpose of retirement that was board-approved July 2nd, 2018. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Sue. A little quicker, Sue. All those in favor? Oppose? So, Carrie. Appointments, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following appointments as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Tom. All those in favor? Want to do them? Do them individually?
You shouldn't have a forty ID.
Okay, let's take them individually then.
Do by position?
Well, what we could do is... Do we have consensus on all of them?
No.
Which ones only have consensus on? A social study teacher at the middle school? Trying to think how I can do this to... All right. We're going to do them as a whole, and then, if you're not going to appoint or approve someone, then... if you're going to, if you're not going to appoint or approve someone, then that'll be a may, vote for that individual. So as a block of E for appointments, all those in favor? Basically, we're in favor of all, then those that are opposed, we have to say which names that you're opposing, I can't take them individually. So, all those in favor? And those opposed? Trying to figure the best way to do this, guys. Come on, do them individually, have them individually.
What are you going to say, if there's any position that you're not in favor of, you're going to say?
All right, we're going to number. Okay, all in favor of position one? Aye. Opposed? Carry, four, one. Position two, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five, zero. Position three, all those in favor? Opposed? Five, zero. Position four, all those in favor? Opposed? Five, zero. Position five, all those in favor? Opposed? Five, zero. Position six, all those in favor? Opposed? Five, zero. F, promotion, be resolved, the Board of Education upon the recommendation, the superintendent approves the following promotion of a noted employee as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Ed. Discussion? Seconded by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry.
Mr. President, I think we have some of our new employees here. So, there's a number of people here, so we'll do this easy. We'll have all, everyone, anyone who's just appointed, which was everyone. Please stand up if you were appointed, okay? And when I come around to you, you could just, you could say your name and your position, okay? And maybe what school you're in, just so the board knows. All right, so we'll start by here.
Catalina, food service.
Food service? And what buildings are you in? Elementary, in elementary, great.
Connor Kenny, school counselor, eighth and ninth grade.
Here.
Pastor Connor, the leave replacing for the special ed teacher at the elementary school.
We'll come back here.
Jordy McCaffrey, the music teacher at the elementary school.
And?
Mike Ducey, nighttime custodial supervisor for the middle school.
Great. And one more.
Ms. Rena Bailey, math A.I.S. at the elementary school.
Welcome. Welcome. I think some of them had some family, they were going to go to the fair, so... You can feel free to go before we get to mom and daddy. Not you!
We clean out them.
Is it us?
Yeah, I'm good at that.
You're good at that, huh? All right. Extracurricular activities, appointments, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent of the school approves the following extracurricular appointments at the high school for the 2018-19 school year. Can I have a motion, please? Sue and Tom. Discussion? Just for your FYI, those that you see volunteers in some of these, if you recall, our new contractual agreement with HTA has some language in there that any new clubs, there's a trial period of one year.
One year.
And then we can...
Then we would negotiate, we would say, doesn't necessarily mean that it will be in the future. We would negotiate and look at the viability of the club, and then we could negotiate if we want to, to have that then as a paid position the following year.
Well, one question, I was really surprised to see the model U.N. is volunteer. I thought we had that for a while.
We've had volunteer, and we've had...
Because that's like one of the best things we have.
You know, the one club.
Yeah.
You've had a number of things for several years, but since this is a new stipulation in the contract, and they're going to have to do it for the year.
And then we'll get the review of it, and then we'll decide on negotiated salary and so forth.
Yeah, we do keep, I know you give us your reports of participation, so we're still going to be keeping an eye on that. We already add all this up, it's a lot of money, just wanted to make sure it wasn't being spent.
We're definitely looking at that, and that will be one of the things on the, kind of the application forms for a new club, is, you know, you start, I started the art history club, and I have two, two people there every week, perhaps that would become a starter club.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Request for unpaid leave, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the request for one year unpaid leave as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, seconded by Ed. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Retirement announcement, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following revised retirement date for the following employee. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Camille. Discussion?
This was just a one day change.
All in favor? Opposed? So carry. Teaching substitute appointment, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the attached revised teaching substitute list with an emergency conditional appointment consistent with save legislation requirements. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Tom. Discussion? We periodically purge these lists, right?
Yeah, Carly, every summer, she sends out a letter to anyone that was active on our list last year, and then they send something back or call and say, yes, I'd like to be on the list again. And so that's how she forced it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Non-teaching substitute, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the attached revised non-teaching substitute list with the, with an emergency conditional appointment consistent with save legislation requirements. Can I have a motion, please? Ed? Camille? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Where's the process for removing from those lists? When you're advising them, if, if there's a concern about somebody putting record, do you focus on them?
Usually we try, like, if there's a concern, we usually have the building principal talk with the person about the concerns. If it continues to be a concern, then it comes to me and then...
Okay. Christmas and operations budget transfer, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following budget transfer for the 2018-2019 school year. Budget transfer number 12337 for $183,557.99. Budget transfer number 12340 to $35,000. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Transportation contract, be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following transportation contract between Highland Central School District and noted parent for the time period beginning September 6th, 2018, through June 28th, 2019, for the total cost of $5,886, as per the attached agreement. Can I have a motion, please? Moved by Sue, seconded by Camille. Discussion?
Yes, it was. It was on the, it was in this.
I'm here now. All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Approval of sale of excess equipment? Okay, approval of sale of excess equipment, that's an addendum. The equipment is, following electric units are no longer needed due to the new gas units being sold to the capital project. It's one-two door standalone freezer, lock no longer works, inventory tag number 000283/20120854. One Vulcan two-door electric steamer, inventory tag 0002820120860. Each piece is 20-plus years old, and we're being offered to take, OCS is offering to take both units as-is condition for $1,000. Be resolved, based on the, be resolved, the Board of Education upon the recommendation, the superintendent approves the sale of those two units to OCS for the sum of $1,000, and both units are in as-is condition. Can I have a motion, please? Camille, seconded by Sue. Sue. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Sarah, you're up.
The first thing that I wanted to give the board an update on was something that I had made you, we are way back in May, we had two email accounts that were compromised by outside entities. As a result of being notified by this, of this by Microsoft, we called our nicer insurance. They connected us with a forensic team that does this sort of thing. So we did a full forensic evaluation of the two emails that were compromised, and then email that they may have sent, and the attachments that might have been sent with them. The forensic team reviewed over 20,000 emails to look for personally identifying identifiable information. And that could be social security number, full name, date of birth, medical information, credit card numbers, I think that's the full list. In going through these 25, or 20,000 emails, we had approximately 205 staff, either current or retired, both HSA and HTA members, as well as a few students who might have had varying levels of PII potentially accessed. We have no evidence that anyone actually did look at this information. That, as you can tell, it was a long process, it was about two months for them to do all of this work. Letters have been sent, were sent today to those people who were impacted. The letter indicates to them what type of information may have been exposed through this. And then it gives a full, we will be giving those people who were impacted a one-year of credit monitoring through a group called TransUnion. And then there's also a 1-800 number that any of these people, they have to call that number to set up the fraud alert. It's not just automatically given to them, they have to call and set it up. Part of that 1-800 number will help them go through that process. It also will give them any other advice that they may need, including whether they should change their bank account, you know, other things they can do to protect themselves. As I said, we have no indication that any of this information has been used at any time, but we do want to make sure that our employees, both current and past, as well as our students' information is protected. So, so that is being done. They have also notified any state entities that need to be notified that this occurred. It's very, it was an interesting process to go through, to know that even though it was only two people's accounts, that was over 20,000 emails, they had to go back. One of the, one of the accounts had been active for a long time. We do know that it was only accessed, and none of the students had like social security number or data, they didn't have a full range of information that was exposed. But the, some of the staff, it was, it was, you know, name, date of birth, social security number, a lot of things. So as a result of all the work that we've done with this, we are certainly beefing up the security protocols that we already had in place. We will be doing a lot more training with faculty about password protections, what you share through your email, you know, to anyone out there. You know, if it's, if it's PII kind of information, it's best to deliver it in person rather than sending things through email. I think we all get so used to the convenience of email that it's really better if it's anything that can be identified, can be used to identify you to some other entity, then it should be shared in person rather than through email. And really emphasizing using our protected sites more to share information between offices or departments as well. So hopefully that will be done soon. If you have, if you have people who call and ask questions, there is the 1-800 number, of course, they can always call our office too, and we can talk to them. In fact, part of the process through the 1-800 number, you know, if people aren't satisfied, the next place to call will be our office, so we'll let you know. Thankfully, it wasn't a larger. So that's that. The other thing, Sue had asked me for a comparison of our region's scores over the last several years. I had given you at the last board meeting, just the results from this past June. Karen was very helpful in helping us put this information together, and I want to kind of, I want to take you through what is here. One of the challenges that Karen and I have faced, as we've done this the last few years, is we're comparing different tests. We have the old region's exams, and then the new Common Core region's exams. And some of those years, we offer, where students took both the old one and the new one. So I want to take you through this a little bit, just to give you what's here. So that top band, that is the Common Core versions of the tests. So these are the ones that are the most recent version? That top one, yep, okay. The bottom is the old test. So you can see in 2013, there were no Common Core, I know. And, and we worked pretty hard to get it this big.
I wonder if it was a 62 or 10 font.
So I can send it to you digitally as well, and you're able to...
Then I can blow it up.
Blow it up.
Landscape though, landscape.
Yes, we were trying to get it all on one screen, or all on one page, so you're not trying to flip through. So you can tell that in 2013, all there were were the old tests. Okay, so those are our scores, and they scored those a little bit differently. What you're looking at is, so any student who scored a 55 or above, if we're looking at comprehensive English, that first, the first test there, there were 150 students who took the test, that's the gray box. The white box, 95% of our students scored a 55 or above. It was 143 students, 95, that's 95% of the students scored a 55 or above.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, so when you move to the next box, of those 150 students, 121 of them scored a 65 or above, so that's 81%. And then the last box, again, of those 150, 43 scored an 85 or above, and that's 29%. So those percents are not going... So those percents are not going to add up because each higher one is a subset of the lower one.
Gotcha.
That got me when I first looked at it, I was like, wait.
Yeah.
How can 180-some percent have gotten a 55?
The lower ones are inclusive.
Yes, it's all inclusive. Okay. So that's... And that's how we reported scores. And it was 55 or above, 65 or above, and then 85% or above is mastery. So now if we move to 2014, which is the next column, you know, big wide column there, you notice that was the first time that we offered the Common Core ELA test and the Common Core Algebra I test up top. But we also... Students could also take the old English ELA test. So that's the comprehensive English down at the bottom. Or the old integrated algebra test. And then they were allowed to take the higher of the two scores. The change, though, comes with the way that we report the scores to the state. Now they're doing it on a level of 1 through 5 for ELA and for math. And that... That's part that will... It's part of what was raised to the top is now going to be every student succeeds or no child left behind. Anything that's a 3 or above is proficient. All right? So for instance, if we look at Common Core ELA for 2014, 38 of our students took that test. That's the number there in the gray. About 19% of them did not... Were not proficient. But 81, if you add up 3, 4s and 5s, 81% of the students were proficient. And it's hard for me to go through it right now when you need to digest it a little bit and look at it a little bit more, but...
If you have trouble sleeping tonight.
Or, you know, you might want to look at it in the morning when your eyes are a little fresh.
Yes.
Not right now. I did go through and add up the proficient percentages across the top just so I could have a look at it. Yes, so I can either send that to you. I mean, I can go through it now.
No.
But... All right, so, I mean, basically, though, as you look across these, for the most part, we've seen some big growth in a few of the areas, you know, within... And it remains mainly consistent proficiency-wise. We did a great job, as Karen was saying, Common Core Geometry was good this year. Algebra was not as good this year, but was... You know, it's... Things fluctuate from year to year.
Right, the next few days, we can send you a, you know, the Reader's Digest version of here's kind of the skinny on it. So you can kind of focus. It's a lot to look at.
It is. And then just what I'd like to say about the bottom, let's see. Living environment down to US history, those are still done on the... Just on 1 through 4 instead of a 1 through 5. That's why. And global history, as we talked about last meeting, was a transition test this year because they're moving to a new test.
Why is it still 1 through 4?
I don't know. Frankly, I don't really understand why it's 1 through 5 on everything else. Like all the 3 through 8 tests are all 1 through 4. So I don't really know... I don't understand exactly why the Regents exam... Do you have... Do you know why they changed?
No, because I was thinking the same thing. It just makes it very confusing.
Yeah.
That's why I did the 3s and 4s on there for you. Because I think it's because it's a transition. I don't know if they plan on going to the 1 through 5. But if you even throw it into a little bit more of a curve, when you look at the 1 through 5, I mean, your... Your like 4s and 5s are different for Algebra I and Common Core English.
Like the cutoff.
Actual cutoff numbers.
And that's... The only thing I can think of is that somehow it has to do with the ESA regulations or how you're reporting.
And the performance index.
And the high school being different. And my guess would also be that probably the math at ELA will stay 1 through 5. And I don't know that the others will move to 1 through 5 or not because it's... I'm not sure.
May I ask? Okay, I noticed that the Algebra II went up significantly. And so this one of those correlations, maybe we should see if next year's Algebra II drops, in which case we can assume the population not necessarily...
That group of students, exactly.
Yeah.
It could also be the tests too. Sometimes the tests are harder than others. And it's kind of interesting. That's why it's important to talk to the other discers.
And definitely in talking, just looking at the geometry exam, I remember having two daughters that took them two years in a row. The word from teachers was that last year's geometry was more difficult than this year's. And, you know, it happens sometimes. And I can even, when I taught global history, there were definitely some years where you thought, okay, this is really fair. And there were a few years here and there where you went, wow, this is really hard. So anyway, but this at least gives you an idea of cross, you know, a comparison.
No, this is great.
Thank you.
Sarah, for the...
Thank you.
The 1 through the 5, is that... So will that vary each year? So for example, 1 could be, you know, 0 to 20, 28 on score, or is it...
I don't know. I don't think it's like the New York's... It's not like the 3 through 8 where the cutoff is different.
No, it's different. I can give you the numbers. I don't have them in my head right now for the 1s and the 2s. But like for the math, the Algebra I, a 5 is 85 and above, where it's 83 and above for the ELA, which I have no idea why they did that. It just makes it confusing if they're... That's why I think it has to do with the performance index.
Does that be the same on each year, so 83 and above?
No, they change.
So what changes here?
They've been consistent for the last two years, but I have a document, which if you want to share it and give you. It changes from 2013 on up through. It's really interesting.
It's a little bit like the 3 through 8 test then.
It's very hard to predict what they're going to be.
All right, just a couple of other things. The draft of our professional development plan, we're meeting on Thursday, all the administrators to go through that. We'll have that for you for the August 28th meeting. And that really lays out not only our philosophy, but what we're looking at across this year as far as professional development goes. And our building safety plans, we have to update those every year with new staff and all of that. So right now, we're waiting a little bit for our new security positions to add those names to the list. I'm not sure that we'll have it in time. I believe we have to have it approved by the board. I can't remember if the cutoff is September 1st or September 15th. I need to double check of that. But those are coming to you shortly. And then we're continuing professional development work. Mark Kiyari will be here next meeting to do a short presentation about our summer academy, the Two Weeks of Wonder, which I was there the first week in and out. Kids were doing great things. They're using an app called Seesaw that allows them to record themselves reading and do presentations. And then they can share that with parents so the parents can see the work that they're doing. The second week, I wasn't in town, but they had a great celebration at the end of it where students were able to volunteer to present projects. They picked... They each picked an animal and then they presented that project to the rest of the students. So it sounds like that one went very well. So Mark will be able to talk more about that at the next meeting. And again, there's a lot of work going on. I met with the AIS reading teachers today. We have a new team at the elementary school. So we really talked about what they're going to continue to do and what we're going to add to the program. And we had a few teacher... Our team of administrators that went to a presentation at Bozies about High Tech High, which is a partnership with High Tech High in San Diego. It's very much... It's a much bigger scale of what the P-Tech program kind of is at Ulster Bozies. Again, I was out of town, so I wasn't able to participate, but I've gotten good feedback. We will be sending a team to do trainings throughout the school year to look at ways that we can, again, bring more inquiry-based learning into our programs. So, Sarah.
Any questions for Sarah?
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Superintendent, yes, Mr. Principal, thank you. So though it's August 7th, I know you've already seen the back-to-school commercials on television. I'm sorry to the students out there. Our first day back for staff is Tuesday, September 4th and Wednesday, September 5th. On the 4th, that is, that's our Welcome Back to Super Ten's Conference Day. I will be doing one of my now quite celebrated phone messages next week. So it won't be for a snow day, but it'll be to wish everyone a happy rest of summer and then just to give them, the staff, the information on that opening day. We're going to do a little bit different. We will be... We'll have breakfast available from about 7:20 to 7:50 in the cafeteria. And then 8:00 AM, we're all district-wide, everyone, and the board will get an invitation. I'll give you a verbal invitation now. We'll be in the gym, the high school gym for a team-building activity before we get to... We want to do so it's not just the same old people stand up there and a couple of speeches. Now, this is going to be a district-wide team activity. I think that will be... Just update the board on the positions, where we are as far as hiring. The principals, administration have been very busy. You've just appointed a number of people. So here, the position will be still have district-wide. I actually just received... We did have one of our nursing staff is resigning to take another position. We're going to have an opening. Charlie may have disposed of it very late today.
RN.
Middle school nurse.
RN.
RN.
RN, yeah. We are interviewing still right now for middle school Spanish. And then the middle school technology position, that's Mike Watz's position that he vacated by the transfer to high school. The high school is all set. They've filled all the positions at the moment. Elementary, we have the secretary in the main office. That is retirement. And then we have the assistant principal to replace Mr. Sickles. But those, I believe we reposted the assistant principal position. We went through the first round and did not have a candidate that we could meet with as far as philosophy and ortholitics. We are still, I believe we reposted and still looking for a replacement for Will Sutton at the middle school. That's for the full-time security position. And then tonight, the board will be hopefully creating the three part-time security positions. Those are the new positions. And then those are posted. Again, with the security positions, the holdup is that we haven't gotten a large number of applicants. And then once, if we're interested in the version, that has to go to civil service. And the civil service has to review their background to make sure that their expertise fits the title. So some of the people we tend to have been rejected by civil service. An update on transportation, just so the board and public knows. So we, you know, through our efforts, increased advertisement for drivers. And we found a kind member of the public will let us put a sign out on their property. So it's more of a view, it's in better view of the public. So now we have five spare drivers, sub-drivers, and three spare sub-monitors. So hopefully that will mean that we won't have those situations where we are short runs and have to combine runs or cancel late buses because we have really picked up a number of spare people. This is great. All the routes for September are set. The monitors and the drivers have all been assigned to those routes. On September 5th, we have kindergarten orientation. That is all set. We'll also do a staff refresher that day for the drivers and monitors. We ordered new buses and they come in about this time of year. So our wheelchair buses arrived also. Additional three large buses have arrived. We are waiting for two more large buses to come in. We will be putting on the next board agenda, you'll have most likely approval for... We're putting out an old bus bid right now, this week or next week. So if anyone is interested, certainly that is open to the public to put in for a bus. If you want to make yourself a motorhome or a tiny house, buses are great for the use. We have bus drills.
I was going to say, it's the late nights.
It's the late nights.
Certainly we can set you up with a nice tiny car.
The bus drills are all set for September.
We'll get Luke back here to see how that goes.
And I believe the Lloyd Fire Department is going to assist in the bus drills. The... Again, with the first day of school, just so, you know, the public is aware, there'll be increased police presence. So don't be alarmed while there are police, so many police cars at the school. The police are going to be following the school buses. The police cars will be at the bus stops. This is something we do every year. But I did meet and I sent the board a tentative schedule. I'll be in contact with Todd Rolson and we'll be finalizing that schedule of events. So we already have a set schedule of events that we're working with cooperation and collaboration with the Lloyd Police to continue to improve and increase security.
What did you say kindergarten orientation was?
That is on the second day of... So it's September 5th.
In the morning.
In the morning.
And there's two... They have two sessions. I don't know the exact time. Yeah.
Yep.
So my understanding for the past many years, they do it on that first or second day of the Super Ten's Conference Day is when they do kindergarten orientation. So that all the staff is there.
And we do kindergarten screening in the spring. That's where they come in. And then the orientation is the first day.
So one thing I wanted to just alert the board. So in meeting with Mr. Don Gottlieb, our interim business official, the tax levy is not set yet. The accounting has not given us the numbers. And that is something that the board has to adopt. So we will have to set up a special meeting, you know, just one of those quick 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM meetings just to approve a single item. So Don was hoping that by Thursday or Friday, he should have it all done, have it and set. We are... Our future business official is crossing her fingers. So it might be a little early, but maybe look at your calendars. Maybe next Wednesday, when we would need at least four people, correct? Do we have four people next Wednesday at 9:00 AM or no? No? 1, 2, 3.
Check with Mike.
So we'll check with...
Mike or Heather might be there.
We'll check with Mike and Heather. Okay.
What time did you say?
We'll do it tentatively, 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock now?
Whatever is best for you, Mr. President.
Oh, you're going to have a bus out front so we can wake you up.
8:00 AM.
Just lock the bus to late.
Why don't we say tentatively, 8:00 AM on Wednesday, the 15?
Blackout period, so.
And I will set on my to-do list for...
I think it's 8.
Yes, I can.
Are you going to do it?
I'd say 8:00 might be easier.
Yeah, it'll be a quick meeting.
Yeah, 5 minutes.
Maybe we should send that a reminder.
Yeah.
Send a reminder. It's 8:30 by noon.
Okay. I'll be right here in the book.
August 15th, 8:00 AM. You know what? If we can all just jump on this tiny house and drive over to my place and do it there.
And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
School property, right?
Do you have any dates for middle school and high school orientation?
I don't.
Right, I'm sure they are. I don't have them here, but we will... We'll finalize them and get them after you.
Yes, and I'm pretty sure they were in the... We went to...
Yeah, we have them. I just don't have them. I don't have them here.
I just don't have them.
Anything else for the superintendent? Okay, under Board of Education, new business creation, new position. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon our recommendation, the superintendent approves the creation of three security guard positions, part-time, 10 months. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
By Camille, second by Tom. Discussion? Again, these are the new part-time positions. We will get those posted. And presumably... Well, part-time, it has to be no more than 20...
6 times a day.
25 hours, I believe, would be the cap on that. So 5 hours a day.
5 hours a day. To me, private salary schedule, is that negotiable?
Yes, so that is... We met... I met with the union and it's on the scene. It's on number 3. Yes, so that is, we met, I met with the union and it's on the same, it's on number 3. Which is the same as like a bus monitor. We talked, we discussed and kind of found where it fit in. Yep.
I'll be, I'm going to ask you a question, these, all these jobs, they will be armed?
No.
They won't?
No, no, so in New York State, it's against the law for anyone other than a police officer to be armed.
Thank you, I, because I had angst.
In a school.
As a little moment.
Correct.
We're not Texas.
Unless they're, unless they're from a certified security company, then they can be armed.
Depends, I don't, I don't know if there's a difference for a school.
I don't think so, Mr. Rowland, I could be.
Only, only because I've worked in Greenwood Lake District, and their security guard is armed. And he came from a security firm, so I think that's why I'm saying that, I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, we couldn't just hire somebody and say, but you're to go.
Your original discussion regarding this back during the budget cycle was to have these individuals pick up the after-school hours.
That was still part of my plan, yes, to pick up the after-school hours.
In each, in each bill?
In each bill.
Okay. So it may not always be five hours, maybe less.
Correct, it will probably fluctuate some weeks, yes.
Will it be overlap?
If it's only five hours, there'll be minimal overlap, yeah. But that's something, you know, my thought process, I think I said this as we, you know, let's get these positions set, hired, and we can revisit in, you know, December. And if they've worked out, we maybe could then reexamine our budget lines to see, you know what? These are a home run, we would like to make them full-time. Or make two, one of them full-time, or.
Especially if they pick up the tail end of the day.
Correct.
It may be dismissal time if we got an overlap.
Right, no, absolutely, certainly that's a busy time at all the schools, that would be helpful.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Both? So carry. Okay, anything on their old business?
No, we have none.
Anything for Good Welfare of the District? Good?
Yes.
At this point, certainly, we have a big hunk of August left still. I want everyone to, not to panic, and to enjoy the time we still, plenty of time of the summer left.
I'm trying, okay. Open the meeting up to public comment. Yes, Mark? Alan, on the business and operations, those two budget transfers, what were those for? I believe one was for the capital.
Capital project was the big, the large one. Well, the 183 was for the capital project. And the $35,000, I don't have in my files.
Wasn't it some sort of finance, finance, anything?
I can get that for you, Mark, okay.
My computer doesn't work.
Nothing? Friends?
Congratulations, coach.
My soccer coach is here. I didn't, I didn't make him stand up.
He said he's done for a win.
Can I speak on athletic real quick?
Yes, you can, thank you.
Just to let you know, I mean, starting next Monday, there's not a lot of Trump left of August left. Starting Monday, we have seven sports, 11 teams, like varsity and JV level starting. This year, we have a full-time trainer, and she'll be here on Thursday, starting. And her schedule will be here, she'll be here Monday through Friday for practices in the morning. And I'm looking forward to that, and the coach is also looking forward to that. Just to let you know, I was just jotting things down, you know, we have, we have seven sports, 11 teams. We use this high school facility, but our golf team goes out, we reach, cross-country uses Tony Williams as well as the high school. Tennis uses Tony Williams, and our swim team goes to Marra as well as, you know, we use the campus here, the middle school campus. So we're kind of spread out all over the place. And I'm hoping this year with transportation, I believe we're going to be going in the right direction of making sure the students get to the middle school, to the high school, high school to the middle school, and to wherever they need to go for their sporting events.
Frank, once the school starts, the trainer is still going to be here on a daily basis?
Yes. Still working on the time, but I believe she'll be here starting at 1:30. And will stay until our events, either a sporting event or practice, practices are completed. So it's possible that she can be here from 1:30 to 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. We'll also be at every varsity football game, home and away. And Saturday, if there's Saturday events in the morning, let's say soccer or something like that, she will be here for that.
So the only away event would be football, otherwise she'd be here for all our home events.
That's right. Now, when it gets to sectionals and/or something like that, I believe that, you know, we could, I believe, other districts, that person would go. So if you have a soccer game or a basketball game away, the trainer will travel with them off to varsity teams.
And then is she available, so if we have a game happening up here, but we are also using the middle school field for something? Is she available, is that kind of how?
I guess it would come down to if we have, let's say, JV soccer game here, but there's a, let's use the spring to say.
Yeah.
Varsity baseball game here, but there's a lacrosse game down at the middle school, she'd probably go to the middle school for the game. And would start her day here.
Just the kid would be available to come back.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is this the first year we're in the football format?
Yes, yes. If you're not aware, we're doing varsity, which is nine, I'm sorry, 10, 11, and 12. And then we're doing modified A, which is 7, 8, and 9. Modified A will not start until the first day of school. So, you know, next week the practice starts.
What are our numbers for both teams right now?
Both, right now, they're in the mid-20s for both teams, I believe. Our goal and Josh Tatum's goal, our goal is that we have 30 to 35 on both, which would give us 70 total student athletes. And that's about what we had last year between the three teams. Going back five, six years ago, we had over 100, so.
Interesting article in the Fitch Journal, if you can, about this new.
Eight-man, eight-man team.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
But I believe we're, our numbers will be fine, it's 11-man.
So, but what do you think of that approach?
If, if the numbers get to the point where we don't have enough for 11-man, that would probably be the next thing to do. But we have a strong youth football program here, and I believe, I believe the numbers will come back up. Be nice to dress 30 to 35 kids with both numbers.
I am hopeful, I'm confident that the numbers will all go up, it's coming, it's coming.
Yeah, I think we're proactive in having a trainer down on board and monitoring all those, the concussions and that protocol and such. You know, and not have to be placed on the coach overnight. It's an independent person that'll monitor that, so I think, I think, you know, in the parent's mind, we're being proactive in that sense. Having, bringing that trainer.
That way, I believe in the next couple of years, they're going to make it mandated at each school district, half and athletic training. Full-time.
All right. Anything else on their old business, Good Welfare of the District? Open the public comment. Mark? Anything else, Mark, you good? Okay, motion to adjourn. Everybody, second by Tom. All in favor? Both, so carry. We're going back now.
Nope.
Everyone, enjoy the rest of the summer, we'll see you on the 28th.